I would like to call the July City Council Meeting to Order. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Present.
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 Present. Everyone could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under public acknowledgements and commendations, I'm going to recognise Colonel Winkquist and Captain McAtterill.
Good evening, members of the council, members of the public that are here tonight. We have two public recognitions we'd like to read off tonight. These are two individuals that have given a lot of themselves to the Cranston Police Department. They're both civilians in our city, one's a city employee and one's a business owner in the city, and they've done a lot for the Cranston Police Department. The first award is gonna be to, let's see here, Mr Morocco. And everybody knows Mr Morocco is passionate about our animal shelter. Our building is quite old if anybody's been to the animal shelter, but he's really taken an older building and put his heart and soul into it. He loves the animals, he's always up there all the time, spends a lot of his own personal time, really making the facility look the way it does. So, we were hoping to recognise him at our last promotional and award ceremony. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do that, so we're hoping to do that tonight. So, I have a service award, a civilian service award for him. If I could just read it off. During the spring of 2017, the Cranston Police Department began a project to renovate and improve the Cranston Animal Shelter. The shelter was built in 1983, and although it had been maintained throughout the years, it was in need of updating. An assessment of the building was done with the Cranston Public Building's employee, Lou Morocco. Shortly after the assessment was completed, new colours for the building were chosen, and Lou started painting the exterior of the building. Lou was instrumental in contracting other city departments to assist with the improvements to the landscaping and exterior lighting. Once the exterior work was complete, Lou took it upon himself to begin assessing the interior of the building with the shelter employees. Once Lou started with the renovations, he began to take a great personal interest in improving the shelter so the animals would have a clean environment to be housed in, as well as the employees having a new, updated work environment. The renovations went from one room to the next until Lou had updated every room in the shelter. In addition to his regular working hours, Lou has volunteered many hours of his personal time to cleaning and improving the shelter. The renovations at the shelter would not have been completed as quickly without the commitment and dedication of Lou Morocco. The city of Cranston is fortunate to have such an enthusiastic and caring employee who takes great pride in his work. Lou Morocco is hereby awarded the civilian service award for distinguishing himself in a manner that reflects significant and long-term positive impact and support of animal control operations for the city of Cranston. Lou, if you want to come up. I believe some of the animal control personnel are here today if they want to stand and just be recognised. Anybody here from the animal shelter? Yes, they didn't make it, but they're very thankful for all his work. This next award goes to a business owner in our city, Mr Cancel. And if anybody's seen our Cranston Police Honour Guard, they're very, very impressive group, and all the equipment, and boots, and all the equipment that they have, and I know Captain McAtterill is part of that contingent, is very expensive, and it's difficult for us to outfit the Honour Guard on the budget that we have for the police department. So, many, many years ago, Mr Cancel came across Officer, now Detective Bobby Tortorella, and they struck up a conversation, and he learned a little bit about the Honour Guard and what they do and how they represent the police department. Last year alone, we were at over fifty events, not only here in Cranston, but also at Gillette Stadium for the New England Patriots Playoff Games, the New England Revolution, and unfortunately, some funerals as of late where police officers have been shot and killed in the line of duty. So, the Honour Guard is a very important representation of our police department, and again, they always look sharp, and that's because of the care and the donations that we receive to get the equipment that they need. So, Mr Cancel, he's here with us tonight, and I just want to read this off. Over the past several years, Mr George Cancel has assisted the Cranston Police Department Honour Guard, becoming the premier municipal police Honour Guard in the state of Rhode Island. Through his tremendous amount of pride in his police department and his selfless generosity, our Honour Guard has been recognised as being the best-equipped and reliable team in the region. Mr Cancel has been Cranston resident for twenty-seven years, and is the owner and president of Title Networks based in Providence. His company is a utility contractor for the regional cable and internet companies. The company was started in 1984 and presently employs forty-five people. Through his generosity, Mr Cancel has donated over $7,000 to the Cranston Police Honour Guard, ensuring that the team is well-equipped, present our country's state and city colours when called upon. Mr Cancel's understanding of community partnership and unparalleled generosity are incredibly appreciated by the department in our city. It is our distinct honour to award Mr George Cancel the Cranston Police Department Citizen Service Award. If members of the Honour Guard are here, if they want to come forward as well, as we present this award to Mr Cancel, if you want to come up. Thank you, members of the council, for allowing me to present these certificates.
Thank you, Colonel. Mr Morocco, Mr Cancel, it's always great to see such great residents of Cranston, a city employee and a business owner coming together to help our boys in blue and be good, good upstanding citizens, so thank you for all that you do. Moving on, we have public hearings. It's limited to doctored matters, public hearings. Anyone would like to say anything on doctored matters, now would be the time. Name and address for the record, please. Hit the button, Lynn, let's push.
Lynn Michelson, Eighteen Henry Street, Cranston, Rhode Island. So, I'm here to talk about the amendment to the fire code that would restrict the underground storage tanks for gasoline, I think it's over a thousand gallons, to be three hundred feet away from residential housing. I think you're all aware of this being an important issue to me concerning what we went through previously with the whole Park Ave and Warwick Ave intersection. So, I just wanted to show my support for that, and also say that it's not unprecedented. In Norfolk, Connecticut, they actually have zoning regulations, but a gas station cannot be three hundred feet from housing. Raleigh, North Carolina also has, it's a four hundred feet from housing rule, so they cannot have gas stations within four hundred feet from housing. In Chicago, Illinois, the neighbours must give approval before a gas station can be built within a hundred and fifty feet from their houses. And also in California, they recommend that there's a three hundred foot separation distance between gas stations and sensitive land uses such as residences, schools, daycare centres, playgrounds, and medical facilities. So, this is not an unprecedented thing to do to make sure that there's a safe separation between flammable hazardous material and housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Ressiger. I live at fifty Malvern Avenue in Cranston, which is a little over one block from the intersection of Park and Warwick Avenue, and I've lived there for almost thirty-eight years. I'm one of many residents from the area that spoke out against the Cumberland Farms proposal back several years ago, and again this past spring. And I want to thank Councilman Stychos for bringing this ordinance forward, and I fully support it. I think that for the safety and wellbeing of the residents, that this is a very sensible precaution to take, not to have a large gas storage tank within three hundred feet of people's residences. Thank you. Well, I also, I urge you to pass this ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you, Sheila.
Good evening. Jeff Gale, forty-four Payne Avenue. I'd like to, I'd like to thank Councilman Stychos for introducing this tonight about the, I'm amending the fire prevention code. I don't want to take much time, I think, I mean, I think we all know the issues from the, from, from the past years, so dealing with Cumberland Farms at Park and Warwick Ave. One thing I do want to say, I just want to add, is that, is that also, this, 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 I believe, will negate FHA first-time buyer home loans. Is that, am I correct? And that's, that's another positive thing for the city, it'll help, it'll help property values, and, and, and it's just what the residents want. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else? Good evening. Name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Kim Lodeffian, one twenty-seven Warwick Ave, Cranston, Rhode Island. It's in regards to the gas tank. I find it hard to believe that once again, myself and the residents of Edgewood, namely Henry Street and the surrounding blocks, should have to come before the committee yet again for an obvious decision of no above-ground or subsurface stationary storage tanks with a capacity of a thousand gallons or more of flammable or explosive material shall be installed within three hundred feet of a residential property. We should not even be having this discussion because it's utterly ridiculous. My family and I have lived in the same house for over sixty years, and many of the people in this room have lived here for forty-plus years and should not be subject to whether or not a thousand gallon or more gas tank should be in their backyard. They should be more concerned with birthday parties, marriages, reunions, cookouts, and get-togethers at their families' houses that live in this neighbourhood, which is why all those years ago they moved here, because it was the quiet, quaint neighbourhood place they picked to lay down their roots and raise their family. It was a place to call home, and therefore should remain that way. The people in this room, and those who could not be here tonight for the reasons to which I have aforementioned above, have joyous get-togethers to worry about, which is why, for one reason or another, they have elected you, the council, to be the watchdog for them, us, and to provide for their, our safety, health, and welfare. I digress. For Pete's sake, please pass this ordinance. We need more shops, not gas stations, Edgewood already has nine, so that people can enjoy themselves shopping and walking to nearby stores to buy items for the happy occasions that they and their families will continue to have for generations to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Donigan, Sixty Packard Street. I'm here also to speak in support of Councilman Stychos's proposed ordinance. I sat and listened on several occasions to many of the people that are here today in their opposition to the proposed Cumberland Farms proposal several months ago. I think that this ordinance would put many of their concerns, to ease many of those concerns, as well as to other constituents of the city that don't necessarily live or would have been affected by that Edgewood or Warwick and Park Ave proposal. I think this would end any doubt that if this, or any such proposal similar to that at Warwick and Park were to come up again before the city, it would save people a lot of time, it would probably save them some tireless nights wondering about what the council is gonna do. And for that, I think it's pretty clear that the residents in Edgewood did not want that proposal, and they don't want a gas station in their backyard, nor would I imagine anyone else in Cranston would want a gas station built in their backyard, and for those reasons, I think that this ordinance should pass.
Thank you, John.
Francesca Bishop, twenty-five Ingleside Avenue in Cranston. I also am here to speak in support of Steve Stychos's recommendation. I just wanted to say I didn't prepare anything, you've probably heard me talk more than enough times. My neighbours and I, I think, are pretty confident that if this were to ever happen again, we'd fight like heck to make sure it didn't, and that makes me happy, but I want to make sure that no other resident ever has to go through what we went through because she shouldn't have to. So, I hope that we have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There's being none, that portion of the meeting is now closed. We will move on to resolutions, there are no resolutions. Special City Council, seven dash eighteen dash O one S, ordinance ratifying the United Labor's International Union of North American Contract, sponsored by Mayor Fong. Director Muskin?
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have introduced, or actually, a few weeks ago, we introduced to the council a proposed contract negotiated with Labor's International and Administration per protocol. We had heard early discussions prior to sitting with Labor's International from the council, incorporated their suggestions along, along with what our management had suggested we include, met with Labor's, looked at their proposals, and went back and forth through a few meetings, quite a few meetings, and came to what we believe is a fair contract for both sides. We greatly appreciate the work of the Labor's, we continue to appreciate their work. We are also pleased with the fact that they recognise the challenges that taxpayers face every day, and I believe took that into consideration when, when we shook hands on a contract. So, we try to be fair, we try to give them what they need to do their jobs properly, and in return, they understand that the taxpayers of Cranston, as many of them are taxpayers of our city, know the restrictions that we are under as well. So, we thank you, council, for their consideration of this contract.
Thank you, Director Muskin. I'll attend a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second. I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Moving on, report of committees. Finance Committee, Council Vice President is not here this evening, he had a charity event, he had to attend. So, I believe the vice chair is Councilman Hopkins. Councilman Hopkins, if you could take the lead in his stead.
Sure. We have ordinance sixteen, six eighteen dash O four, ordinance transferring appropriations in amending the budget for the fiscal year July one, two thousand and seventeen, dash June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, fourth quarter transfers, supplemental appropriations, sponsored by Mayor Fong, reference to the Finance Committee in July, and it has been approved by the committee.
I'll stand motion to approve.
Motion, second.
I have a motion to second, under discussion. Councilman Stychos.
I'd just like to point out that the, really, the two areas that are particularly glaring in, that went way over budget, was the outside legal services, which was $600,000 over what was budgeted, and overtime in the fire department, which was half a million dollars over what was budgeted.
Looks like Director Muskin has some comments for you, councilman?
Yes, councilman, both are, are both higher. Both higher than we, we would all like to see them. We're hopeful with the new class of firefighters that just came on board that we should see a drop in that firefighter overtime, given that we have a new class that just got on board. So, we're, we're hoping for a significant drop in that. Legal fees, unfortunately, we battle a lot of things, and it's a routine judgment call as to how far we want to fight, when we choose to settle. Settling comes with a cost as well, so it's often a case-by-case situation, and I'm unfortunately very aware of those costs, and often as disgruntled as you probably are looking at them.
Councilman Lanning.
Concerning the legal fees, I keep bringing up the Karen Gilbo situation, that's been going on for five years, and, I don't know, can get me a rough estimate how much we paid in legal fees in that case.
Councilman Lanning, going back to two thousand and thirteen, which is when this began, the total accumulated to this point is $497,495, just short of a half a million.
So, roughly, we spent half a million dollars in legal fees on an ongoing case that's been going on for five years without any settlement. Am I correct?
Councilman, I'd like to assure you that this is, I can't divulge too much at this point, this is a priority on my desk. Five minutes before I walked in here, I was sending an email on it. I am confident there will be a resolution either way on this in the relatively near future. It's gone on for an awfully long time.
And that's the reason why I'm bringing this up, because the, the cost of legal fees in the city, outside legal fees, it's extraordinary, when you think about it. I wish we could do more in-house rather than hiring all these outside attorneys, but that's the situation the way it is, and it's up to the administration to take whatever steps necessary to resolve this type of a situation. Thank you.
Good, I think the challenge sometimes is making a determination on what fights are really appropriate to continue to have, and what things are appropriate to settle, and it's a very delicate balance, and I say that very carefully. There are times that the nature of the egregiousness of something is such that we might not want to settle it, though there might be a cost, and not just this case, in general, I'm talking about. In other cases, sometimes you say, you know what, you have to settle, but we're also very cognizant of a precedent that we set, that if we settle for one type of a claim, that we might have five more people come along and do the same, the same thing. So, it's a very difficult balance, and I assure you, when I grapple with every day, I get that same sheet that you get of the costs, and I think of the things we could do with that money in this city that both the council and the mayor would very much like to use that money for. But the obligation to protect the city from even greater costs through litigation becomes what I have to weigh that against.
Okay, we're in agreement on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say in the, in the, I don't know the, the details of this specific case, but Karen Gilbo was definitely a victim of misconduct in the police department, according to the state police report. What that report revealed was that the police chief-
Councilman Stychos.
Yes.
You're treading on some dangerous ground here.
I'm merely repeating what's in the state police report. I don't know anything else outside what's in that report. And that report stated that the police chief attempted to rig the promotion process so that she would not become, she would not get promoted. After she got a good score on the written exam, he attempted to find out what that score was so that when he gave the oral exam, he could score her low and knock her out of contention for the promotion. So, I don't want anybody to think that that's a frivolous, that Karen Gilbo is, is, complaints with the state are frivolous because we found that they were quite justified, and the only reason that the score, or one reason that the score was not rigged, was that the personnel director at the time refused to give him her written score.
Attorney Kirshenbaum.
I was just, Stychos, while I agree that you have the right to your own personal opinion, I think voicing him as a council member carries a certain denotation that is improper for you to do. This is a case in litigation, you have not been subject to the pleadings, you haven't seen the depositions, you know literally nothing about the case except what you read in what I would consider to be a lopsided state police report. So, I think that drawing conclusions, if it were that easy, honestly, there wouldn't really be a lawsuit right now. There are two sides to every story, and by just perpetrating one side is very unfortunate, especially when you are both an elected official and a fiduciary for the people of the city of Cranston.
Councilman Lanning.
Councilman Stychos only quoted the state police report, which is a public document that anybody can read. I don't see where he's violating any fiduciary responsibility or any other responsibility.
It's a great question, but from the state police report, he then jumps to the conclusion that the case is not frivolous, without even seeing a complaint, without even seeing a doc, we don't know what was filed. How many complaints is it? What counts as frivolous, what counts un? No, no one can answer these questions. You're citing from a, a four- or five-year-old document that has no relevance and required no remedial action in terms of anything. Now, she has a right to sue, she has a right to sue, I will give you that, but this, let this case be settled by the attorneys or in court.
I partially agree with you, however, since we spent half a million dollars in this case to date, I think we're all looking for resolution. I know, I certainly am.
I can, I, I can to, I, not only partially, I can totally agree with you that we spent too much money on this case. I don't know when resolution is going to come, but resolution, of course, requires two people to come to an agreement. If two people can't, that's what the courts are there for. Unfortunately, there's no agreement to be had at this time, or else, believe me, we would have one.
No further comment? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman McCall?
No. No.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Councilman McCall?
Yes.
Councilman Brady?
Yes. 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 Moving on, Councilman Hopkins, next agenda item.
Resolution six eighteen dash O five, an ordinance ratifying school committee's collective bargaining agreement with Rhode Island Labor's District Council thirteen twenty-two. Tradespeople, unit July one, two thousand and seventeen, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty, referred to Finance Committee, July ninth, two thousand and eighteen, has been approved in the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve in a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution authorising real estate tax abatements.
I'll stand a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second. I have a motion to second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Next resolution authorising motor vehicle tax abatements.
Motion approved.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, Councilman Hopkins, for filling in.
Resolution authorising tangible tax abatements.
Forgot one, sorry. I'll stand a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion to second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, Councilman Hopkins. Councilman, Council Majority Leader Paplaskas.
Thank you. Under Safety Services Licensing, we have one agenda item. Six dash eighteen dash O two, ordinance amendment of title eight point oh eight of the- of Title 8.08 of the Code of City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Fire Prevention Code, Flammable or Explosive Storage Tanks, sponsored by Councilman Psychos, and it was amended and passed in committee.
I'll attend a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, Councilman Paplouskas. Moving on, stays with Councilman Paplouskas. We have the report of committees for the claims. Those are on the docket, if anyone would like to read them. Public hearings, this section is open to-
We have ordinance committee, point of information.
Oh, I apologize, that resolution escaped me. I keep, my surface is moving too quick with my finger. Councilman Paplouskas.
Under the ordinance committee, we have one item, a resolution to study the feasibility of the Cullion property as a dog park sponsored by Councilman Psychos, co-sponsored by Councilman Lanning and McCauley, and this was passed in committee.
I'll attend a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second, under discussion. Seeing, oh, sorry, Councilman Hopkins, then Psychos, then Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to bring back a little bit of information historically about this ordinance. This was the first proposal that I brought up maybe two years ago in terms of a place to put a dog park in the city. So obviously, it's come back again, sponsored by Councilman Psychos, but historically, I was the first one to come up with this proposal, and I'd like to be part of the sponsorship.
Thank you, Kenny. Councilman Arquette, and then Councilman Psychos.
Thank you, Council President Freena. I as well would like to be a co-sponsor on this legislation, if you may. Also, I think historically, the councilwoman who initiated the dog park was Sarah Lee. I think she was here earlier, I don't know if she's still here, but I think Sarah Lee got the dog park rolling, so thank you for that, Sarah Lee.
Councilman Sarah Lee, ever. Councilman Psychos.
Yeah, just to explain what's going on here, the city owns, I think it's 14 acres, the Cullion property on Pontiac Avenue, which is not being used for anything other than apparently kind of a dumping area for the Public Works Department. That was in part purchased by state money, so there's an easement that covers that property, which bars any fences. I contacted the Department of Environmental Management and asked if it would be possible to discuss the possibility of a dog park, and the response I got was that the department would be, would probably be amenable, was the words that they used. And so the purpose of this resolution is, I guess, to see if they definitely would be amenable and to see if they would agree to slightly alter the easement on the property in order to allow a dog park, and that we hope to hear back from the mayor by August about the results of those discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Seeing no further discussion, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning.
Yes.
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 Yes. Moving on to public hearings, open to any member of the public that wants to speak on anything. Name and address to the record.
Pauline DeRosa, 97 Cypress Drive. Good evening, Council President Freena, and council members. In August of 2017, the Public Works Department passed a resolution, and I quote, "Implying the administration to conduct a traffic study at the Sakonosset Corridor," end of quote. Has the traffic study been initiated? When will it be completed? And when will it be ready for public consumption? Sakonosset Crossroads at Pontiac Avenue is a failed intersection, we're all aware of that. Most of that failure can be attributed to an increase in traffic. I'm going to just go back here or backtrack for a moment, if you'll bear with me. We were in attendance at the planned commission meeting here in these chambers two weeks ago on July 10. At that time, Mr. Kelly Coats, president of the Copinato Group, was here to work out a signage relief issue for one of his tenants. On his way out of the chambers, Mr. Coats approached us and told us, and I quote again, "There will be a Topgolf where the Citizens Bank Building is located. It's better to be truthful," end of quote. Although there have been abundant rumors about Topgolf being developed at 100 Sakonosset, it seems the potential is there for these rumors to become a reality. With the development of a Topgolf, will come a higher density of traffic, particularly on weekends and evenings, noise pollution and light pollution. There will be poles and netting rising as high as 150 feet to prevent golf balls from crashing into car windshields on Route 37. You can do a search by typing in Topgolf.com and clearly see what will be coming to our community. In view of this information, we believe it is imperative that a traffic impact analysis take place in the very near future. If traffic is problematic now, imagine the negative impact this venue will have on the Sakonosset Corridor. Are we still waiting for funding from the state's transportation improvement program? Has the Copinato Group been advised to begin their own traffic study? We have no answers yet, but anticipate that the city council will make a concentrated effort to address this troubling issue. One last item. When will the abandoned Krispy Kreme sign on Sakonosset be raised from its moorings? It has been standing in silent vigil for 11 years. It's time to end its suffering. It has become an eyesore. Thank you.
Thank you, Pauline. Anyone else to speak on anything? Good evening. Name and address to the record, please.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Lisa Gibb. I live at 45 Rhodes Avenue, and I'm sorry I got here a little late and I missed the beginning, but I would like, if, can I still talk about the-
The thing we approved unanimously? Sure.
Oh, you did already? I asked, I didn't get that.
Oh, yeah, we approved it unanimously, all eight of us.
Super. So you don't want my stuff?
You can. I mean, if, Lisa, I love you.
I can make a paper airplane and send it up to you, Councilman. I don't want to be rude, but I-
No, no worries, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? They're being done, that section of the meeting is now closed. Moving on to election of city officials. Personal, Personnel Appeals Board, General Trambetti, member reappointment term to expire February 23, 2021, by Councilman Arquette. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Psychos.
Yes.
Councilman Foley.
Yes.
Councilman Arquette.
Yes.
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 Yes. Cranston Historic Cemetery's Commission, Walter Slocum, member reappointment term to expire August 24, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning.
Yes.
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 Yes. Zoning Board Review, Matthew Gendron, member reappointment term to expire July 23, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, Councilman Paplouskas.
Is there a typo in the-
Yes, there is. It's supposed to be 2023. I announced it correctly, but it is written wrong on the docket.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning.
Yes.
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 Yes. Under executive communications, we all have the report on legal counsel that was furnished with us tonight. Under Cranston Fire Department, Director Muskin.
Deputy Chief Richard Bedard requests to be placed on the pension role. Deputy Chief has met all qualifications.
I wish the deputy chief the best of luck. He will be missed. I'll attend a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion and a second to place Deputy Chief Bedard in the pension roles. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Psychos.
Yes.
Councilman Foley.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
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 Captain Frank Ennis has requested for continuation of service and has met such qualifications, and we thank him for his continued service.
I'll attend a motion to approve. Captain Frank Ennis to be continued in service.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Psychos.
Yes.
Councilman Foley.
Yes.
Councilman Arquette.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
Yes.
Cranston Police Detective Peter Pratawamy has also requested continuation of service. He has met all qualifications, and we thank the detective for his continued service.
I'll attend a motion to approve for Director Pete Panae.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lanning.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Foley.
Yes.
Councilman Brady.
Yes.
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 11 Grand Avenue Administrative Update, our housing inspectors did go out, issued first notices, second notices, and court summons, unless they had replied within the past day or two that I'm unaware of, the owners of that property will be receiving court summons. That particular owner owns, I believe, like seven properties in that area, so they will be dealt within court.
Thank you very much, Director. Council President Communications, happy summer. It was the feast this weekend, it was a great event. I know I had fun being in Councilman Paplouskas's Ward 5. It's always a fun cheerful time being there. It's always, they're always a welcoming community, and I love being a part of it. Secondly, I just want to remind everybody how fragile life is. A good friend of mine was killed on Friday night, he was 52 years old, he died in a motorcycle accident, and I just want to remind everybody how fragile life is and how hug your loved ones, because you never know when your time could be up. And the things we think are important, that mean a lot to us, kind of fade away. So, thank you. Councilmember Communications, Councilman Psychos.
Yes, I received the two notice of violations that you sent me, thank you very much. And I had just one question, and I guess it applies to 211 Grand Avenue. There, if you do violate the code, there's a violation, there's a fine of, I believe it's $50 a day for a violation. When does that, when does that start getting imposed?
I'm not sure if it's from the time of the notices or the first notice or the second notice. I can find out what the timing on that is, and that's in the purview of the courts, but I can certainly find that out. I'll look, I'll look into that.
But will the administration, if this does go to court, same with 211 Grand Avenue, seek a fine equal to $50 a day?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the prosecuting attorney for the city will, will request, but we typically press those, and in a case like this where we may have, you know, people living in apartments that weren't permitted, we take that very seriously. That's, that's just not acceptable. So I'll follow up and see what we're doing. I certainly have no issue with, with pressing that one and with having our prosecuting attorney in court do so.
You're talking about 211 Grand Avenue or Yard Works?
211 Grand Avenue.
And Yard Works?
Yard Works, we continue to write violations that are within our purview. Again, I want to speak carefully about what we do there because I am aware that the neighbors have discussed getting legal counsel. Again, we're frustrated with the process, we're frustrated with the state law allows, but we will continue to cite for what we can. One of the violations you received is a notice regarding a trailer, and that's a pretty extensive violation that we will be following up on aggressively.
Okay. I do, I remember Councilman Arquette at a budget hearing asking-
Okay, thank you.
-for a total figure on fines that were assessed for court, for code violations, and I believe the figure was somewhere around $6,000.
For Yard, for Yard Works?
No.
Oh, for-
Total, for a year.
And Solicitor Vadekia just mentioned that for the Grand Avenue, for example, the court will usually give them a drop dead date to comply, and then we'll start.
That's right. Usually with these types of violations, what the notice will say is that you've got until such and such a date to come into compliance. If you do not, that's when the clock begins to tick. Of course, they always have their, their day in court, but that's when it would start. They have the option, so if they comply, that ends-
Yeah, okay, yes, that, those letters did say that, and it was 30 days that they had to comply, and that's, well, I just, so I do hope that the city presses in both these cases the financial penalties because it seems like that gets people's attention more than anything else.
Money certainly does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, President Freena. Two points I'd like to make. The surveillance cameras, I believe my bill was continued, we need to move on that or create a study commission, because I am getting emails and phone calls pertaining to the status of that bill, Council President, so whichever direction you want to take on that bill.
I believe it's coming up at the next ordinance committee meeting.
Right, right. The second point I'd like to make, it's not here, but I'd just like to make a statement. I think I may have fun for getting Laurel Avenue paved, and haven't paved in 40 years. The neighbors and residents are ecstatic about it. However, with every good deed, there's also, you know, catch 22. With the road being paved, speeding has increased, so I would like to put for the next Public Works Agenda discussion about speeding on Laurel Avenue, if we can institute some, maybe a stop sign on, there's not one stop sign on Laurel, the whole road, so we need to look at that, Chairman Hopkins, okay? Thank you, President Freena.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Paplouskas, tree treatment and night-
Thank you, Mr. President. This can, item can actually be removed. I know the administration's working on a way to treat some of the trees that are getting hit by trucks when they come down the road, so we can remove that. I just want to briefly thank everybody for their hard work at the St. Mary's Feast. The weekend and the week went very well, even though the weather was bad yesterday, the fireworks still went off, so it was a good day in Ward 5. Thank you.
On a test. Councilman Psychos.
Yes, anyone, just a request for information, something that came up after the docket was finalized. Apparently, the Board of Canvassers sent out letters to people indicating, saying that your, the address you used on the assigning a nomination petition was the wrong address, and therefore you need to re-register, and here's a registration form. And I'd like to know how many of those letters went out and how they were, how it was determined who would get them. And the reason that I ask is that one of the people who got that letter was my wife, who has lived with me for quite a while, longer than she probably wishes, but at our, you who has lived with me for quite a while, longer than she probably wishes, but at our, you know, at thirty-seven Ferncrest Avenue, and I don't understand, you know, I don't understand how that happened, and when she called the Board of Canvassers to ask what was happening, they were, it was a Friday afternoon, and the person who answered the phone was unable to tell her what was going on. So I just would like to know what, a little bit about, like I said, the number of letters that went out and how it was determined who would get a letter.
Sure, absolutely. Could you send me an email on that, Councilman? And I'll just check on it tomorrow when I see Mr. Lima.
Okay.
That way, I, just if you think to send me an email, I'll remember it anyway, but just as a backup, just in case, because sometimes the brain is.
I'll send it right now.
Yeah, the brain is aging, so, thank you.
Counselman Lanny.
Now, even though I'm not on the docket, I'd like to ask the administration if they have any information concerning what happened last night at the Hookah Bar, where people were stabbed.
Yes, there's a show cause coming up.
There's a show cause? I was going to ask for a show cause hearing. There's one coming up?
Yep, there is, and one thing I was, it just came up, it was something that we noticed today, and I certainly have to appreciate that Mr. Comperon presented it, that he did put out a very involved releasing report on that.
I'm glad you have it, because I think someone like this would be taken very, very seriously.
Absolutely, very seriously, yes. And I'd just say, our enforcement did a great job with it, considering how serious the future of it was.
They always do.
Yeah, they do.
Thank you, Councilman Lanny. Just to, Councilman Paplouskas and I talked about this yesterday, Wednesday morning, after the event. He suggested we schedule a meeting on Wednesday. I was actually going to have it tonight, but it wouldn't have given the police enough time to finalize their report and be able to come back to us and discuss it with some kind of, some kind of closure. So Counselman Paplouskas, under his advisement, so we're going to do Wednesday. He called for the meeting today, so he's on it, and we'll, even members who aren't on the committee are welcome. I encourage all the councilmen, including Councilman Brady, to be there and to listen and hear what's going on.
I closed councilmember communications.
I figured it would be nice of this under councilmember communications, since they've both certified for the ballot and neither one of them has an opponent. Congratulations, Councilman Paplouskas and Councilman McCauley. No matter what happens in the election, you will be gracing the appearance of this chamber in two thousand and nineteen and twenty, so congratulations to you both. Old business, there is no old business under new business. Madam Clerk.
The following four ordinances are being referred to the ordinance committee for a hearing on August sixteenth. Seven eighteen oh one, an amendment of chapter ten point thirty-two of the Code of the City of Cranston, Motor Vehicles and Traffic for Valone Road and Chester Avenue, a three-way stop sponsored by Councilman Paplouskas. Seven eighteen oh two, an amendment of chapter ten point thirty-two of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic for Bayview and Dennis, a four-way stop sponsored by Councilman Stychos. Seven eighteen oh three, an amendment of chapter ten point thirty-two of the Code of the City of Cranston, Motor Vehicles and Traffic for Tacoma and Atwood, no parking, sponsored by Councilman Paplouskas. Seven eighteen oh four, an amendment of title ten point thirty-two of the Code, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic for Tiffany and Atwood, no parking, sponsored by Councilman Paplouskas. The following two ordinances to be referred to the Finance Committee for a hearing on August sixth. There's the typo on the docket. It says August sixteenth. My apologies. That is the seven eighteen oh five ordinance ratifying school committee's collective bargaining agreement with the National Association of Government Employees, local Rhode Island one fifty-three, for the custodian unit, July one, two thousand seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Proposed ordinance seven eighteen oh six, ratifying the school committee's collective bargaining agreement with Rhode Island Laborers District Council thirteen twenty-two, bus drivers unit, July one, two thousand seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. The following claims to be referred to the Claims Committee for a hearing on August sixth. These are property damage claims. William Santagata from alleged incident on July eighth, two thousand eighteen. Michael De Fusco, alleged incident on April twenty-seventh through the twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen.